Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 2nd, 2024 Meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us tonight are-
Tom Tarenti. I think this is the right one. Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Parnell.
Jack Demergen, zoning administrator.
All right, we're gonna be missing Judy Smith tonight. We'll see if we can handle the business with, without her. All right, first item on the agenda is a review of the minutes from the March 19th, 2024 meeting.
I just had a couple of typos on, on page two. Second sentence, they're looking for signage between, and two comma, two perents means inches, not feet. One means feet. So either a single or a foot, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
All right. I had, on the first page, the sentence right before new business, Mr. Demergen noted at the request for proposal, and I would add it after the word proposal, on the P O C D update, just so it's clear what, what we're talking about there. Anybody have anything on the second page? I had one sort of lengthy change, but. And here's what I would suggest on that first paragraph. They stated that the sign regulations are somewhat outdated. They are looking, and then I would delete the words, for signage between three feet to 10 feet. And then I would add, after the word looking, to amend the regulations- tell me if I'm going too fast. To amend the regulations to allow the display area of ground-mounted signs that are of a height greater than three feet and less than 10 feet in the commercial zone. And then the last thing I have on that, on the last sentence there, signage must be 20 feet, I would put in at least 20 feet away from the property lines. It's applicable to all the property lines, right? All right, you got that?
Big soup.
All right. That's, that's all I had.
Move to approve the April 2nd minutes, 2000, March, March 19th minutes, 2024, as amended.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Oh, abstainers.
Yeah, and Tom abstains, he wasn't here for that March 19th meeting. All right. Old business, Jack. Or anybody, what am I saying? It's old. No, no, no. Old, old business is the next item on our agenda. Does anybody want to bring anything up under that topic? No? Okay, how about under the topic of new business? Also, no. Okay. Reported by zoning enforcement officer Jack.
All I, all I had for today was that self-storage facility at the end of Salemie Lane. They're a pedal to the metal over there. So if anyone is curious, you know, they can drive by and take a look at what that area's doing. You also notice that on the same street, they took down a lot of the old houses on the opposite side of the street from the development. I've been told, I don't know what it is, but at some point a developer is going to come in and somebody's gonna try to do something with that parcel. Can't even tell you what it is, but, you know, just to familiarize yourself with Salemie Lane, because it looks like those dated residences, single-family homes that are there are going to be removed at some point.
Okay.
But that's all I got for you.
All right, you may, maybe you could comment on the cease and desist order. Because I noticed we have some of the folks from the neighborhood there.
Sure, yeah, as I said at the last meeting, a cease and desist order was issued, and the, and since the applicant, I'm sorry, the property owner has appealed to that cease and desist. So an appeal to my decision goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Tentatively, we are going to be meeting at the Ju-, at the regularly-scheduled June meeting of the Z B A to have this hearing where the property owner can essentially challenge my, my order, and the Z B A has a few options. They can uphold my order in, in full, they can uphold with revision, so they can uphold part of it, or they can uphold none of it. They can side with, with the property owner and say, we don't believe that this decision was correct.
Can they also add to it?
I do not believe they can add to the order, no.
Right, because that, it sounds like that's what the neighbors are, are interested in.
I, I have had some, I have had some discussions, and, you know, I've done my best to, you know, explain. What we included in the order is what we can include.
Right.
I cannot pull things out of, in there and, and include that. You know, I understand some neighbors in the area wanted a little bit more than was in that order. I, not much I could do.
Do the neighbors have an ability to complain, to appeal the decision of the Board of Appeals to the Superior Court?
That is a good decision. I think anybody can appeal a Z B A decision. But that might be a question I would run across the town attorney.
That's their issue, but I'm just curious as to what the framework is.
If the Z B A were to decide, you know, I don't agree with this order at all, we're gonna, you know, get rid of it, I'm sure, you know, there are grounds for an appeal or some sort of process they can go through. Just like if they uphold the whole order, the property owner can appeal their decision to the, to the courts as well.
And, and Jack, when you say that we, if a cease and desist has three elements to it, and that's what we could do, what you, if we were to expand on that, it is, without going through a legal process and proof of facts, those are three elements that are on a, like, an undisputed public record, that we could say, these things are occurring and have overrun both the variance and the court order.
Correct. Anything that is listed in that cease and desist is what myself and the town attorney felt the town can enforce. There is no other language for us-
Based on the permanent injunction.
Based, based, well, based on the injunction and on our local regulations. So we, we took all of that into account, and that is what, we took the language directly out of that injunction of what can and can't happen, and that is what we are able to enforce based on the language that we have in our code and in those injunctions. The town is not gonna be going after anything that's not listed in there, because that's not our, our purview.
And, but that doesn't mean that there might not be other elements if something new happened, or new action, or private action happened that could be proven.
Yeah, private action is private action.
This is what we could prove without further-
Correct.
-legal action. Okay, thank you. I just wanted a little clarification.
All right, so I don't know that there's much more we can-
I don't have much more of an update.
As, as I said, you know, a few meetings ago or whatever, I mean, there's not, I don't think there's a lot this commission can do. I mean, we're sort of out of the loop on it.
It's going through the, the proper channels. A decision was issued by the town, that decision has been appealed. We have to see where the appeal goes and go from there.
I imagine everybody will want to be at that meeting, the Z B A meeting.
Yeah, and appeal is, is a public hearing, so anyone from the public who wishes to come in and speak for or against that order can come in and, and speak that.
But they may not.
I recollect, do they get notification, I'm talking to the-
The adjacent property owners will.
You're gonna have to watch.
Yeah.
It's public record, and it'll be posted, but you will not get individual notices unless you're an adjacent property owner.
Correct, yes.
The town of Orange, in, so the question being is, the town of Orange, does that allow you to park-
I think you're gonna have to come to the-
Well, we, it's, this is not-
Well, I didn't want, yeah, listen, I, I-
I'd be happy to answer any questions, you know, but we're trying to stick to the agenda.
I just don't know-
An update.
I would like to know what the board has to say about it.
You already did. We, we already, we already said what we had to say about it, you know, it's-
There's a town regulation that they're in violation of that they're not citing. That's another issue.
Right.
I'd be happy to speak to you about it, but no, no one calls me and, and wants to sit down and talk about this.
You can review that with, with the zoning enforcement officer, you can review that with the town attorney.
He doesn't want to hear us.
Which, then you can see him that night at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, and, and you'll have every opportunity in the world to, you know, to voice your complaint about the substance of the cease and desist order.
No, no, separate issue. Cease and desist is part of that order. Separate from that, they're in violation of your zoning laws, and we have-
I would be happy to go over them if someone would like to come into my office and, and speak to me about it, that has-
Which we did, I did.
No.
All right, all right, listen, I'm not-
I'm not getting into this debate now, but I'm, I'm happy to sit down and speak about it, and not just be told that there's other problems. If we want to look at certain areas of the regulations that we do not think they're in compliance with, I'm happy to go over that.
All right. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, because we have other things on our agenda, and, you know, I, I hope that this gets resolved favorably in the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. But, I mean, certainly, that's, that's where the action is now. I mean, it's not here. There's nothing, nothing that we can do about it. The cease and desist, the, the town zoning enforcement officer's charged with enforcing the zoning regulations and issuing cease and desist orders, not this commission, and he's done it, at least as far as I could tell, he's done it on the advice of counsel. So, you know, I, if you, if you want to talk to Jack about it further, he's happy to, happy to talk to you. You know, Vinnie, I can't speak for Vinnie, but, you know, I, I imagine you could-
Absolutely.
-get ahold of Vinnie and, and have a conversation with him, or you can voice your concerns at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. And then we see where this thing goes, you know, I mean, it's, it's-
Do you mind if we just hand you the violations that we found?
They can hand it to-
You can hand it to Jack, it's not, it's not-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. All right, so let's, let's, let's move on. There's anything else, Jack, under your-
Nope.
-report? Okay. So then we have two public hearings tonight. One is a continuation of the public hearing we opened at the last meeting. This is a petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by Racebrook Medical Center LLC, and the purpose was to amend Section 383, 188 of the Orange zoning regulations. And, you know, is, is the applicant here?
You wanna-
Did you want to speak to the application, Gary?
Do you want to read the notice, or is that not appropriate?
Oh, we'll get to that for the next one.
It's already, it's already open. So this, this, oh, for the next one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the next one we'll read.
Gary Rishatelli, Mike Romano from Racebrook Medical Center. I wasn't here for the last meeting, but Mike was, so I'll let him articulate on where we left off with it.
Does everyone have the revisions?
Yep.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Romano, R O M A N O.
Thank you so much.
So, so this was basically, I mean, I think we got, we had a problem with the language, we didn't think it quite worked. But I think the language now, amending 383, 188 subsection C 1 and 2, I think captures what, what you have in mind.
And, and 3, we added in 3.
And 3, yeah, and, and you added in 3. Right. So basically, what, what we're, what we're changing here is, on a ground-mounted sign before, that ground-mounted sign either could be, could either be no more than three feet off the ground, or it could be no more than seven feet from the top.
10 feet.
10 feet, 10 feet from the top, thank you. And again, all we did was clean up the language to say now, as long as that ground-mounted sign is at least 20 feet from all of the property lines, then you can't have a, a sign that extends from three feet to 10 feet. Covers that whole space.
Correct, yes. They, they would like portions of their display element between three and 10 feet.
Right.
If, as long as you meet the criteria they laid out in the language.
Right.
And, and the setback is from the edge of street pavement.
Property lines, property lines.
Well, the edge, edge of street pavement is different than the property line.
Well, what do we write here?
Pavement.
Pavement.
Okay.
Purpose of the sign, I think that's okay.
Can't imagine it's much different.
Are we talking about the difference being the right-of-way, or?
Yeah, the, the edge of the road is not typically your property line. You know, there's a portion of area there that they keep for road improvements or utilities, things like that. So, the edge of the road pavement and the property line could be a foot separate or distant, or difference, could be 10-foot difference.
The property, I, I mean, I think that the, the pavement, what do they call it? The street pavement would be acceptable, because this one's just visual.
Right.
So, as long as where the pavement is doesn't change, a 20-foot setback from the pavement means that if you're in a car at the stop bar trying to egress out onto the roadway, you, the sign's behind you, you know, because your car is maybe 18 feet long. So, the, the police, the, you know, the, the people who are gonna look at it, your application, are gonna be able to determine you have a clear sightline. You know, so, what are the chances that, after this project's going on, putting the fifth lane on, you know, that, that-
Something's gonna change.
That something's gonna change, you know, it's, I don't know that that's a high probability event.
The only thing that my response to that would be, we also added subsection 2, which says, the commission finds that, the commission must, you know, on an application for signage-
He was talking about that a little ago.
Yeah, signs up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
The pavement gets widened.
Yeah, it's not 20 feet anymore.
Now it's not 20 feet, and you're staring at the side of the sign. That's the only, that, you know, again, not trying to overcomplicate it, that's the, you know, I, do I think that's a high probability event after, you know, we, we're going through this widening process that took how long to happen? You know, not necessarily particularly.
The point well taken. Point well taken.
Yeah.
And I think the safeguard to that is that any application for the sign would have to be approved by the police department and the fire department as well.
Yeah, but what he's saying is, there's no, at that time, there's no application.
Application-
Signs up.
Yeah.
Signs up.
Road's getting widened.
Right.
And there's no opportunity for the, either the commission or the police department-
On an existing sign.
On an existing sign.
Is that existing?
Right, right.
That would affect all existing signs.
Yeah, which now doesn't matter, because they don't start until present.
Well, you know, listen, Kevin, I, I mean, even the way it's worded now, it may be that the zoning enforcement officer could take action to cause them to move a sign. Because it says, on any sign attached to the ground, no portion of the display element shall extend below a height, a height of 10 feet unless it is less than a height of three feet. However, the display portion of the ground sign may be higher than three feet but less than 10 feet, provided the ground sign is not located within 20 feet of any edge of street pavement. So at some point, when the road is widened, in our example, is the property owner subject to an order by the zoning enforcement officer to move the sign?
It's a pre-existing. It's a pre-existing condition.
But is this a, this isn't a special permit or something, where if the-
Court, yeah, no.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to open up a can of worms and say, in the event the street pavement is changed?
You're not on. You're getting, yeah.
Do you want to open up a can of worms and say that-
How about if you said the ground sign is not, is at all times not located within 20 feet?
Well, first, and, you know, going against my usual thing of asking about something specific when it applies to everyone, where's the pavement in, in relation to your-
You really want to ask that?
Where, where is the pavement in relation to the right-of-way near your property, Jones?
It's over 10 feet from the-
Okay, yeah, so now you're, you're just way, way back.
Yeah, we, we would be about 30 feet from, from the pavement.
At that point, poodles.
Let's put that language in, I just suggested.
Which I think works.
The ground sign is not located within 20 feet at, at all times located.
No, the, the ground sign is not at any time located, is not at any time located within 20 feet of any edge of street pavement.
I mean, worst-case scenario, it gives Jack something to talk about to somebody-
Right.
-before the accident happens.
Yeah. Are you agreeable to that, that change, that makes sense?
I think that works, yes.
All right. And we added the, as you mentioned, Gary, we added the language regarding, you know, the location of the sign is subject to approval by the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector, the police department, and, and the fire department.
Right.
So we have that. All right, is there anything else you want to add?
Oh, that's it.
I think we understand where we-
I think that's it.
Okay. Is there any, anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Okay, either in favor or, or against? All right. Okay, thank you. Let's see, let's, what's, if, unless the commission thinks we need other information to decide the application, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So this is the point at which we decide.
Yeah.
As you know.
You know, as we had spoken last meeting, my, you know, my only concerns with where the signage is relates to the sightlines, and if, if the police, police, fire, building, zoning, somebody's gonna be looking to make sure that, you know, we don't create a dangerous condition. So, I, you know, I, you know, I don't really see any reason not to do it.
No, I don't see any problem with this. I mean, I, I didn't from the beginning, and now I think we have the right language.
Just wondering, just out of cur-, you know, just to, to completely think it through. So one of the reasons why it's absolutely no problem in what these, this applicant will be looking at in the future is that the sign's not gonna be right at an entrance. Okay? But, but again, I guess even if the pylon moves closer to the entrance and it's 20 feet back, you still have-
Number two.
The, the person who needs to make the decision is gonna have a clear view.
Right.
Okay, so never mind.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, the, when you're deciding where to put the signs, you're given that consideration.
Right.
I mean, if you're a reasonable person.
Right, and if you want it closer to the road for visibility purposes, you just leave, you, you won't start until you're 10 feet off the ground.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so we, we're all clear? Anybody, yeah, somebody prepared to move that it sounds like to accept, approve the application?
I'll move that we accept and approve the petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by Racebrook Medical Center LLC to amend 383, 188 of the Orange zoning regulations as set forth in the applicant's zoning regulation amendments to modify that particular section.
And as amended by the-
With that one change we wanted.
Oh, as amended by that change.
Okay.
And that will be with an effective date of April 9th.
Aye, so add.
So add it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four to zero to approve the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Go up, finishing up the project.
Yeah, we're getting there.
All right.
Another couple of months.
Okay, item number six on our agenda is another public hearing, and it's an application for special exception permit or use submitted by Sipmore Realty LLC for the property known as 477 Boston Post Road. And it's a request to reduce the required number of parking spaces under, under Section 383, 175 of the zoning regulations. Paul, can you read the legal notice for us?
Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Orange Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. An application for a special exception permit or use submitted by Sipmore Realty LLC for the property known as 477 Boston Post Road to request a reduction in the number of parking spaces under Section 383, 175 of the Orange zoning regulations. Copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange Zoning Department, dated in Orange, Connecticut, this 19th day of March, 2024.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Is the applicant present? Okay, if you would, please come in, come to the podium. Give us your name and let us know what you, you want us to, to hear about the application.
My name is Stanley Laporta, and I'm representing the applicant.
Could you spell your last name, please?
L A P O R T A.
Thank you.
And what we're requesting is, in your regulations, you have a section that addresses the, I guess you'd say, staggered use of parking space. If you have a daycare center that's gonna be open during normal hours, and you have something that runs at night, sharing the parking spaces. So in this case, what we have is, we have on the first floor, we have retail. The property steps up. Are you familiar with the property?
Yeah.
So the property steps up, so the first floor is retail, and it's about 3,400 square feet.
One, one unit, one-
No, there's three units there.
Three units on the first floor.
Right. Two are vacant, vacant, and one is-
Do they, do they all face?
They face the, the post.
The post, okay.
Correct. If you look in the application that I put there, here's a drawing on the last page. Right, I'm referring to this section of the building here, right, right across the front.
Yeah, okay.
There are two that are vacant, and there's one that's functioning.
All right.
So the balance of the second floor is office space. There is 3,800 square feet approximately directly above the retail space, and that's the area that we're, I guess that's in contention right now. So what we are saying, based on your 383, 175, is we're looking to make it known that we want to use the same parking lot without adding any spaces, and-
Include a restaurant use.
Correct, on the second floor. So it requires 38 spaces. We have 16 now, based on the use as-is, which is a office space. So we would actually, I gave you a nice little chart there on the front, and it shows you that the second floor, the proposed restaurant is 38, and if, instead of the 16, so if we had 78 spaces total, so I did it as, as fair as I could. I listed it as, you've already approved it, so, because that's what's, what we're asking you to do. So if you take the use as requested, and then you take the total number of spaces, which is 78, that would be required, the existing spaces on site physically are 51, so we're under 27 spaces. We would need to add 27 additional spaces. But considering that the office spaces will not be used during the same time that the restaurant is open, and the office spaces are not open on Saturdays and Sundays, that we're asking to avail usage of your 38, 383, 175. that we're asking to avail usage of your thirty-eight, three eighty-three, one seventy-five.
Can I clarify one thing? You say that the second floor proposed restaurant required ten spaces for every one thousand square feet.
Correct.
And I'm looking at, I'm looking at section three eighty-three, one seventy-two. The nine. Is that the standard we're using? Because that indicates that it should be sixteen spaces per thousand square feet.
We're three eighty-three, one seventy-four is the section you'd be looking for. And that is restaurants and other food and beverage service establishments are ten per thousand.
Is that, is that in conflict with what I just read?
Yeah, I believe you said sixteen per thousand.
All right, but why?
Where I'm, where you read it. Three eighty-three dash one seventy-four is the number of spaces required in our regs based on the use and the size of the building. For restaurants.
Three eighty-three, one seventy-four? Joint use of parking area?
No, no, you, maybe you're looking at.
What am I looking at?
A dated section, if you want to look.
All right, so, because it's included in the binder here.
Then it, then this might be dated, because three eighty-three, one seventy-four is the section that our regulations touch on, the required number of spaces.
All right, hold on a minute.
In the binder, three eighty-three, one seventy-four is.
Then this is probably, this was taken from dated language. Yeah, can I actually see it in the bottom right hand corner, it says twenty-fourteen, so this is dated and incorrect.
Aye.
So I, I can confirm in our today's, you know, regulations, the most up-to-date versions.
It's ten.
It is ten spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, yes, for restaurants and other food and beverage service establishments.
And retail's four.
Uh, yes, retail is four for this size shopping center, yep.
And office space?
Four.
Four, awesome.
Office type businesses, yes, four as well.
Okay.
Everything is four, except the restaurant use.
Which is three times, or almost four times ten.
Just for everybody's edification, the first floor plan and second floor plan are reversed. First floor should say second floor.
Okay.
And vice versa.
Correct.
All right. So, so if, if you were using the second floor for office or retail, not, you know, you weren't here requesting the restaurant use, the parking requirement for that space would, would be sixteen.
Correct.
Right? And if you, so if you plug sixteen in there and added up the other requirements, you'd have fifty-six, a need for fifty-six spaces in total.
However, that wasn't your requirements then, when, when you allowed the parking lot to be installed the way it is?
Okay.
That building, I think, has been there since ninety?
Sixty-nine, it's a.
Sixty-nine?
And then four times twelve point five is fifty. There's twelve and a half thousand foot building.
I guess my, my point is that, e- even if we weren't considering the restaurant, the, you know, the, the additional parking, or the higher level of parking required for the restaurant use, we're still, we still don't have the number of parking spaces that would be required to comply with the regulations.
Correct, it's, it was, however, that's, it's a existing condition.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is, do we, do we want to enlarge?
There's not one inch on that site where you could put one more parking, one more car. I went to, I talked with Tracy May up at the Department of Transportation, and there is some green on the front there, but because of the radius that she's going to require, they don't care when the building was built. So in order to pass D O T, we've got to put eight-foot sweeps on both corners.
How many?
And if we did that, we would have to, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be allowed to take any of that green belt, even if for some crazy reason it was approved, and you end up with like a two-foot green belt. But they wouldn't allow the, because that would be a part sticking into the, people would drive over.
It was tight, I was there, it was on site.
Yeah.
It's a tight parking lot. At the time, there were no S U Vs, I'm sure.
No. Station wagons.
Half of them today were S U Vs, and it's tight.
Yeah, I mean, it's customary for us to take a ride around.
Yeah, good.
Take a look, and, and I did, did as well yesterday. And I see what you mean, how many parking spaces? I know your plan shows, I think, forty-seven.
Well, it shows thirty-five up the top. I counted them very roughly.
I walked each one, it's fifty-one. Put my foot on each space, I can't take hearsay and then come in front of you guys. Well, if I have to come in front of you guys, better damn well know. So basically, what we're asking is to acknowledge the fact that those spaces won't be used.
Well, yeah, you said.
What's your first name?
Stanley Laporta.
Stanley, so you, you said that before, what, what makes you think that the front won't be used past five o'clock? Is there a restriction in some fashion?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir, the, the, the front will be used, without a doubt.
Past five o'clock is what you indicated it wouldn't be used?
No, but, no, I'm referring to the, I'm referring to the two large office spaces on the top.
Oh, oh, oh.
The, the basic breakdown is that the, the post-road facing three thousand plus minus square feet is serviced by the lower level of parking, there's like fourteen spaces down there.
Yeah.
So that's just about four to one.
Yep.
That's sort of self-sufficient.
Right.
And human beings are lazy, so anything that's happening on the second floor is going to be serviced by that lower parking level. So you get up there, and there's thirty, like thirty-five or so spaces up on the top side. And the argument is that the office spaces go home.
Yeah.
When the restaurants open for dinner.
Where is this, and I know it's all conceptual at this point, but where is the restaurant going to be?
Above the, the lower level.
Right, so my question is.
Accessible from the second floor only.
Right, but the office space isn't a hypothetical, the office space is there.
Right.
Right, and he's looking to use.
Most of the people will be gone during dinner, after dinner.
My point, exactly, so my, my question is that whoever is going to be in the office space is going to be, according to what they're looking to do is to go home at five o'clock. Right. My question is very simple, what makes them think they're going to go home at five o'clock?
Well, and what makes the, in, in the, in it also.
Your zoning is based on.
Yeah.
It also presupposes that the restaurant won't be in operation until five.
That we can put a restriction on, should we need a restriction that, I don't know what's going into the, right now, there are two open spaces in the retailer, or, uh, office area.
Yeah.
Does it allow for any retail in that area?
The presently leased, the, the space number two has the balance of a ten-year contract, so there's eight more on that.
Was that Battery, who's that, who is in there?
Batteries is to the left, as you're facing.
I, I, I don't know, I'm only.
Different building, okay.
I believe it's a salon.
Oh, nail salon.
Yeah, I believe it's a nail salon in there right now, and then the other two retail spaces are vacant, correct?
In the front, right.
In the front, yeah.
The retail spaces.
On the upper level, there's office and vacant. I, I went by there a little before six-thirty tonight.
Yeah.
There were seven cars down below at the nails.
Yes, it was busy this afternoon.
And three more vehicles parked upstairs, up top.
Those are, those are, they leave those there full-time, they're there twenty-four seven, I don't know what they're doing there.
Right, so.
But that's my point, the spaces are taken.
So the reason why we have the ability to grant a special permit exception for shared parking as a concept is that statistically and intellectually, non, they're non-coinciding uses, okay? That doesn't mean that everyone magically disappears at five, it means that, you know, say in an office space that you're parking four per thousand, you know, those three thousand foot buildings might only have six employees only, but they get guests who aren't going to come after five, you know, it's, it's sort of a.
I have no problem with everything that you're saying, my question is, what happens if they want to, is a, is a retail use allowed in that front?
In the front, yes.
Only in the front.
But that's on the lower level.
On the, all I'm saying is lower level, but that's the level that we're looking to use those spaces.
No.
No.
You're not going to use it, you're going to be using only the ones on the upper.
The thirty-five in the back?
Yeah, because people aren't going to walk up.
And how much would you, would we ordinarily need for a thirty-eight hundred square foot restaurant?
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
So we're looking just, just three would be, it's a reduction of three, he would have it as of right?
Except the numbers are a little off, it's totally, total fifty-one, the front has eleven, so the back section has.
It's short in the front as well.
The front has fifteen, Stan.
It's fifteen in the front?
Yeah.
Okay, so out of fifty-one minus fifteen, and you're ending up with fifty-one.
Thirty-seven.
It's thirty-seven.
Right, no, that, basically, you're buying an argument that the restaurant, which needs on paper the ten cars per thousand.
Thirty-eight.
They're gambling, you know, that the operator understands that some of those spaces on that upper level might be occupied by an accountant working late. Or you, who never go home.
Right.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
And so they're going to be, you know, their customers may be looking for spaces.
Okay, so what I was trying to get to is that, can we put in a restriction that they can't lease to somebody past six or eight o'clock, or seven o'clock, or, no, we can't do that?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
You can't.
Well, we're going to, looking to do a restaurant, wouldn't we have a restriction that it's not going to open? We're going to have hours of operation, correct?
What you're telling, what you're telling us is it's not going to open for lunch, right? Because that would be in conflict with everybody else in the building.
That's not their business model.
That's where it breaks down is at lunch.
Yeah.
If they want to be open for lunch, that's where this.
And do we have the right to restrict that?
That's not their business model.
We do.
No, sir, no, sir.
I think the applicant can go on record and tell us, we will not be doing it, and if they were to come in and actually.
That would be part of the approval, right?
I would, you know, we could require them, yeah, we could put that as a condition, that they provide us with documentation confirming that they will not be open for these certain hours.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think we can just say, we're going to approve a hypothetical business with these hours right now.
But Jack, what about, you know, deliveries, I mean, the restaurant doesn't.
I'm sorry, but we're interrupting this gentleman's presentation, so why don't you get, finish your presentation? If we interrupt it, your flow, sir, so sorry.
Okay, so the, the only last thing that I had to add to this is, we're not asking to reinvent the wheel or to go outside of your purview or the zoning purview, we're just actually going by what the, you, 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 you're offering us three eighty-three, one seventy-five, so we're trying to avail ourselves to that.
Okay.
And we're not, we're not looking for any special, we're, it's, it's pretty clear the way your code presents it, and it's exactly what we're requesting.
All right, so what, and this is, will come out in our, as long as we have here, we might as well be saying it straight up front. So, so first off, for this shared parking analysis to make sense, restaurant versus office space, it, there would be a restriction against being open for lunch.
Correct.
Okay.
Except for Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay. All right.
That makes sense.
And then two.
And you are right, there would be deliveries during the day.
Yeah, but, but deliveries are things every place has to live with together. I, I mean, and we also have some, or I have some questions about the dumpster location, just from a practical standpoint.
We have not talked to the health department yet, I'm assuming it's going to have to go in the far back.
It's going to have to be in the back. You need every parking space.
It's going to have to be covered, yeah.
Yeah. The second thing is that if the analysis and the shared parking requirement is going to be based on office space and a restaurant on the, on the second floor, okay, or upper level, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
If someone goes in for a change of use, because they don't want an office space anymore, they want.
A restaurant?
To expand the restaurant, or they want to, they want to do something else up there.
It would be denied.
Okay.
Of course.
But I will say, that might not come under our purview. If, you know, it's permitted as a right in the zone, and if there are only.
But they wouldn't have sufficient.
Wouldn't they have?
Right, but, you know, if, if there are only alterations are going to be within the existing building, they go to the building department. You know, in a perfect world, yes, you know, they would come to us and say, just so you know, we want to expand this another thousand square feet. But if they're not changing anything about the site, and doesn't trigger a site plan application for, for myself or this commission to review.
The building department might not know.
Hold it, let me just make sure I understand. You guys sat there and told me that it was four parking spaces per thousand for office?
Yeah.
Four for retail, too?
Four for retail as well, yes.
But ten, new, new code, for restaurant?
Correct.
If they want to change that office and use it for a different use, meaning?
Yeah, restaurant.
Restaurant.
That wouldn't trigger any review, but.
Not if, their only change was internal, you know, it's a permitted use as of right, so it's not like they need a special permit for a restaurant.
But they.
They're not offering any site work or alterations in that manner.
They don't got sufficient parking, though.
Yeah, I mean.
But, right, in a perfect world, they would come to us and say, hey, we're expanding another thousand square feet, we have to readdress parking.
So they don't have to go to a, they don't have to go to some kind of.
They just pull building permits, you know, and, and it would be something easily overlooked, I mean, yes, I, I have to sign off on building permits, and I do think it's something I would catch, but it is a good point brought up that, you know, they, they are already deficient today.
Well, that's what I was getting at.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing that math, isn't this building twelve thousand five hundred feet?
That's what's listed here.
Okay, and if everything today is.
Office.
Office or retail? Four times twelve point five is fifty.
I thought we ended up having forty. I thought we were saying it had under forty.
It's got fifty-one.
Fifty, okay, I'm sorry, so it'd be just conforming today?
Yeah.
So barely, yes, okay.
Okay, so sorry, I was confused, okay, when we're saying it wasn't conforming today.
Yeah, no, it's.
I'm fairly certain of this, Jack, but because there's no site plan, there's no department head sign-off at all.
Well, I mean, just, just the building department, but again, you know, building department is not looking at parking spaces, they're looking at their internal structural things.
No, I'm talking about the fire marshal.
Oh, exactly, so the fire marshal would not have, well, they would be reviewing their internal stuff, but they would not be looking at the site as a whole.
Right, right.
Correct.
But we could ask them to give advice.
The current site is existing, even if it's deficient in turning radiuses for fire vehicles, okay? And if there's a fire, they're pulling in and just going into the corner and doing whatever they got to do.
But wait a minute, though, I mean, if, if, if we agreed to this.
Yes.
That would be, I mean, let's, let's say they are non-conforming, if we agreed to this change, we'd be putting a lot, you know, we would be making a much more intensive use of the property. Well, I mean, that's the reason why it's four spaces per thousand on retail or office, and it's, you know, what, ten spaces per thousand on restaurant, so that we're adding a more intensive use.
For which they, for which they're going to be deficient by a couple of spaces.
So is it, what I'm saying is that analogous to a, you know, an enlargement of a non-conforming use?
The not, non-conforming now, though.
No, well.
Well, we won't be a couple of sp- we won't be a couple of spaces short, because what, what I'm telling you is, is, what, what I'm asking, I'm asking you to do is acknowledge that.
That there's other spaces that you can.
They will be free during the, the off-hours.
Well, that's the whole shared parking concept.
Right.
Right.
I just can't get my head around the fact that we can't have, we can, we can acknowledge that they're ours, that we, I, I certainly wouldn't approve it if their hours were going to be open for lunch, okay?
There's no vehicle.
Except Saturday and Sunday, because I think it would be tripping over each other.
Too much competition.
Exactly.
There's no vehicle in place right now in any of your regulations to, I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Because later on, and then, right? There's no vehicle in your, in your town's documentation that forces, forces a review.
Yeah.
So if there was something to fix the, some language that would actually force a review in the, in the future, when you, when you do your regulations.
What, what Jack's talking about is more systemic.
Would you, do, do we have the right to require a site plan in connection with this application?
The commission can, can request, I mean, they, they did include a copy of an old. The commission can, can request, I mean, they, they did include a copy of an old site plan.
Right.
Do we want, can we require them, I don't think we can require, we can ask, but I think.
Well, I mean, how do we know, for example, that the, uh, that the dimensions of the parking space is conformed to the regulations?
Well, we, we don't, I mean, it's an older site, and I don't, I don't think there are even lines in a lot of the.
Well, I don't re- I don't remember, I did drive it.
The one that's on-site on this side?
I don't think there are lines.
There are.
There are.
There are?
Yep, every space has lines.
Yep, they're tight, but they're lines.
Now, we, so now we require double striping, which does take up a little, little more space.
Again, we're talking when it was built versus, versus what the new code is.
But I, I don't see why we wouldn't have the discretion to require a site plan that shows on it where the dumpsters are gonna be located, where the loading docks are gonna be located, what, you know, screen buffering we would require.
To me, this is gonna be like what happened at that, uh, you know, travel center with respect to loading. Basically, restaurants are used to being in tight quarters. Something comes in, dump, they, you know, it's like a, a fire drill, they get stuff out, truck drives away.
Right.
You know, there's not a loading space per se.
And, and actually, the flow, the parking, the driving flow is not bad, the parking maneuvering is tight. But you go up and you go around, that's what I'm, you know, and you go back out to the post.
Yeah.
But if it's one-way around.
Yeah, if, you gotta ignore that one-way sign that points the wrong direction, though.
Other than that.
And it does need some striping with some arrows, yes.
Yeah.
Cause I, I went up on, you know, as I was supposed to, and then I saw the one-way sign going.
The other way.
The other way.
You're trapped.
Good thing you're lawless and you're ignored it.
What, what happens if, what happens if, uh, we were to approve this? And, you know, six months, a year from now, the restaurant decides this is not for them, this spot, they move. Go out of business, whatever, uh, the next restaurant comes in, do they succeed to these rights? Do they run, do these rights, if we grant them, do they run with the land?
Well, the use runs with the space.
Right, and a special permit does run with the land, so if we were to approve a parking reduction, regardless of who takes up this property gets this parking reduction. So, could we put that operating hours limitation on any restaurant?
Well, we'd have to.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't make sense otherwise.
Right.
I, I agree.
And we have to make it run with the land.
Right, it, well, it, yeah, the special permit, the conditions of the special permit have to be met by whoever's using it.
Right.
Right?
Makes, the only way it makes sense.
Right, so if the conditions are on the building, that, you know, the, uh, you know, there's, you know, the, 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 you know, this, this part's a restaurant. This, this is only for office space on that upper level. You don't, you know, the, the lower level sort of deals with its own self.
There's no, there's no, uh, office space, I mean, now there is, but in the, in the plan, it would just be all restaurant, correct?
No, 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 it's an L-shaped building, the front part of the L is gonna be restaurant, the rest is office.
The front part on the upper level.
Look, look at, uh.
This piece, well, that's gonna be the restaurant on the second level.
On the second level.
Right.
Right.
Correct. And then, the, you know, the L facing in towards town.
Oh, there's a, there's a twenty-eight hundred square foot space, I see.
Well, that's, the top is nine thousand feet, so that's more like five, fifty-five hundred or something.
Somewhere, maybe.
Round numbers. So, the, the conditions of approval would have to be the hours of operation. And that, you know, the remainder space up there is office. And if there's a change of use, the, the special permit's no longer valid.
But wouldn't.
But that's what I was talking about, okay.
No, I was just gonna say, you're exactly right, but wouldn't that all come, it would ordinarily come out in a site plan approval, application for site plan approval.
But they wouldn't.
Where you would see on a plan what exactly they intend to do, and, and we may have some input on that. And the, all the, all the restrictions you're talking about would be right on that plan.
So you wanted the special permit application to have a requirement of a site plan?
Well, I'm, uh, you know, we, we have a lot of discretion on this, I mean, it's not like, you know.
I mean, special permits do have a site plan requirement, but this is a special exemption, you know, this is not coming with any site alteration proposals.
Right, they just want us to acknowledge that, that we actually have a part of our zoning regs that acknowledges that the synergistic uses of a one piece of property that could.
Lower the required part.
And does the commission.
You said it quickly in a few words.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And it's not, it's just, how many spaces are they gonna be short?
Uh, six to probably eighteen.
Three, well, three for that top portion, that thirty-eight hundred square feet times ten per thousand.
Right, but he's saying that if, if you just do the bulk calculation required.
Cause it's an aggregate.
That nine would get four, that'd get thirty-six plus thirty-eight plus whatever's on the line.
Hang on, hang on, um, you got thirty, you got thirty-eight from the restaurant.
Yeah.
And then you have another, uh, eight thousand?
Six thousand.
Six thousand for the remainder, times four, is twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Plus the thirty-eight is.
Down below, times four.
Times four, so it's, it, it's not just the six thousand, it's another, it's total.
The basic, the easy way to look at it is, take six times, it's gonna be eighteen short.
On the gross.
On the gross.
Right.
Why eighteen?
Because the, i- if you, if you assume that it's got fifty spaces and it needs fifty.
That's what it has right now.
And you take the thirty-eight hundred feet for the new restaurant.
Thirty-eight.
Is, is ten instead of four.
Right.
That's six times three point eight.
Eighteen, yeah.
You know, eighteen, nineteen.
Don't drag me along, but I'm there.
Okay, that's if you, if you didn't have a shared analysis.
Right.
So, so, yeah, he says on his, on his chart, if all were to, if, if all were to be operated simultaneously, you would need seventy-eight, you have fifty-one, you're short twenty-seven.
Correct, but there, there is no other way to present that honestly, you know, instead of. Any, any other way to present it is manipulative.
Listen, I, I think that the, the applicants, the application seeks something that we have in our, in our regs. The question is, the, is the intensity more than, or the usage more than, of the shared spaces more than you anticipate?
I kinda look at it a, a, a little differently, so, I, 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 first of all, I believe that the shared parking does happen, okay, in reality, so, um, as long as you're not, uh, competing, as long as, as long as any mistake is contained on your property, so to speak. So if you're wrong, you, only your tenants are gonna be.
Be affected, yeah.
Now, if this restaurant was trying to go in on the first floor, I'd have a problem with it because the natural place for people to park would be in the adjoining property of the pet store, okay? But, you know, I'm just saying the way people are, alright, but since that's not the case, they're looking for the upper level, you know, people don't hike, they're, you know, they'll go somewhere else. So, to the extent that the shared parking portion of this analysis is wrong, it's only gonna inconvenience their tenants. Uh, you know, it, because it's on that elevated platform when you, when you drive in.
Right, plus the, just.
So, but I don't want it to get, I, 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 I don't know why, if we approve a special exception, it can't be based on criteria that then run with the approval, meaning the hours of operation and the fact that the co-tenant on the upper level has to be office.
The fir- the first, as you, when you come in and then you turn to the right to go up the hill, that's a dicey little turn right there.
It is, and there's an air salon that, I can't believe they close at five o'clock.
No, no, they don't, we're not counting up, none of this is counting on that retail level being closed at, uh, when the rest, the retail.
That's what Kevin's saying, because everything's up top and isolated.
So you're not thinking about any of those spaces in the front?
No, just human nature-wise, I wouldn't take into account.
Well. It's a, you see.
You're a healthy guy.
More or less.
Uh, uh, okay, you, you're gonna go to a restaurant, and you're gonna park, and you're gonna hike up a hill.
No.
No, you're not.
Well, especially that hill, it's, like I said, it's.
It's a hill, I saw it.
Okay, so, so, you know, it's really, whatever's happening on that lower level's supporting itself.
Can we bifurcate that property that way? I mean, you, you're looking at the, the property as itself, with the front, parking spaces has a total of fifty-one, right?
Yeah. And that's if the, assuming that they don't put a, use any of those parking spaces for dumpsters, which I.
Right.
Really would not recommend at all.
Health department won't allow it.
Okay, it's on the drawing, that's what I was like.
Well, but that's sort of goes to my point about having a site plan, because then it's clear what we've approved.
Yeah.
It can be referred to.
Okay.
You do realize that we can't get anything approved whatsoever, uh, with the permit for the restaurant until the health department signs off on it? And that means the two dumpster locations, the fence around the dumpster, um.
Oh, I, I think what Commissioner Parenti is saying is that if you were to, as part of this application, get this site plan updated with the striping on it, with the arrows on it that you're gonna do, where the dumpsters are going.
With the count on the, on the parking spaces.
And the count on the parking spaces, they're all the right size, and then we have that as the exhibit, and our approval says, we are approving this with these two conditions, the hours of operation.
Plus we get sign-offs, I, you know, do you wanna say yes to this and have the fire marshal, you know, come to you later on?
We, we, we can't really have it as a formal site plan submittal. If, if you want a site plan designed as a supporting document to this application, that is not something that, that I would distribute to all of the board, I mean, that's, that's a separate application.
But we could.
I think you'd be better off making a decision on what is in front of us, because we don't know the timeframe, I mean, all, all these to the review for a plan for every single department head, it might take three weeks, a month, depending on if any of them have revisions or issues that they find.
Well, I know, but that's, I'd rather find out about those issues before I said yes to the idea.
Then I, again, I, I'm just a little wary of requiring a full site plan when we're reviewing something that, there's no phys- yeah, there's, there's no, yeah, there's no site plan application, there's no physical changes being proposed.
Well, but on a special permit application, we have.
We, we can, I mean, we can, but.
But is it just for the dumpster?
But they're not submitting a site plan, they're submitting a plan that is, you know, just showing us what it could look like.
What I'm getting at is.
But Jack, we're, just hypothetically, say, say they're showing thirty-five spaces and, and only twenty-eight exist.
I, I agree, I, I think what it could tell us is good, but it's just a hypothetical site, and, cause again, they're not proposing any changes. You know, whatever changes they put on, on the supporting document of a site plan, that's not a formal submittal, they, they don't have to put that in.
Right, except there's a dramatic deviation in the parking requirement, which makes the number of spaces they're showing.
Relevant.
Particularly to remain.
What I, I go back to, it's a health, safety, welfare thing, I know, if, 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 if we said yes, as I wanna know that it was safe, how am I gonna know it's safe unless?
I think that could work if there's, you know, it's not a formal site plan submittal. If he wa- if they wanna put together the hypothetical that we're talking about, and we put that in front of the, uh, fire marshal or the police chief, you know, they could give us their thoughts on it, but they're not going to do a formal review because there is no, you know, they, they require a fee. You know, a formal application, you know?
One second, let's pump our brakes, one second. This is a special permit, could you please open special permit criteria? Tell us what we are entitled to. Sorry about that. Could you, uh, uh, to repeat, please advise us of what special permit criteria are. And that will tell us what we're, I would say, entitled to, so to speak.
Application, application for a special use shall be submitted in writing to the enforcement officer, committed by the application. Statement of use, um, a site plan, which again, I wasn't disputing that we can require a site plan. Architectural plans, S and E, uh, controls, and any other. The commission, upon written request by the applicant, may by resolution waive the required submission of all or part of the information required here. Um, if they find that the information is not necessary in order to decide any application.
Okay, so, let's stop, let's stop for a sec, so. Uh, to Tom's point, uh, that there are useful, properly sized spaces available, uh, having a updated site plan, even if there's no, it's not a site plan application, we're using it, the same words for a different meaning. Updating this site plan to assure us of that, you know, even if there isn't a formal review, it couldn't, we take it upon ourselves to ask the, the police and or fire.
I would hope so, I mean, it's ridiculous if we can't.
Of cour- I'm not saying we can't, I'm just saying whatever's shown on the site plan, they, they don't have to do, uh, you know, that, that's just what I wanted to make clear.
They don't have to do.
They're not proposing a site plan here, they're not proposing any site changes, we can ask for this, this.
Wait a minute, they're, they're proposing a, what amounts to a much more intensive use of the property than has ever been made of it. I think that building, that building was built.
It's just different hours, though.
It's, as an office building.
Right.
And now they wanna put a restaurant in there, and it requires a lot more parking, and that may present health, safety, welfare issues that we oughta think about, I mean, I don't wanna approve it and then have the fire marshal come to us and say, what, are you kidding me? You know?
I just, I guess I would just wanted to make clear that it is a site plan to show this hypothetical situation. It is not a site plan that is going to show drastic improvements to the property. Right, I, I guess that's, that's.
But, 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 but wait a minute, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, uh, beyond us. We'd have the, the right to ask for it, we have a lot of discretion on a special permit application, so if, you know, we said, listen, you know, uh, we're not approving it unless the, they incorporate some lighting, or, or whatever, I mean, I, I'm just, I, I don't know.
We can require, we could say.
We could say that, that's a condition to our.
We could, I, I'm, but they're not proposing any site changes.
I know.
If we wanna say, the only way you'd get this parking reduction is by bringing the entire property up to code.
No.
No, no, I'm not saying that.
What we're saying is, we would like an existing condition survey, okay? Because this one was updated by N O K.
It was nineteen ninety-something, was it?
Ninety-eight, alright.
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six.
The, the only problem with this is that, um, the parking lot will not meet the new codes, so.
Okay. In what respect, boss?
Well, um, I don't think they'll have any issue whatsoever if you found yourself approving this with a, uh, approval with a contingency of a, um, opening time for the restaurant during the weekdays. But to spend, uh, six, seven thousand dollars to have a surveyor come in there and mark out where the stripes have to go according to code, just to know that it's gonna be shot down, um, that would be, that would be fruitless.
It's not a special permit application, I mean, it's not a site plan application.
Right.
No, but as part of a special permit application, we can require a site plan.
A site plan.
Right.
An existing site plan.
Yeah.
But you're going to deny it because there will not be enough spaces with, when, when I show you that the existing site plan, this is the existing site plan.
We wouldn't necessarily deny it if we.
I would, I would, I would not, I would not bring it, I wouldn't, I would tell the client to walk away.
If we, if we agree to, I mean, you do have the, the, the right to explore what possibilities may.
I understand, but that plan is a certified stamp plan, and nothing has happened since that was, that, that plan was made.
Does it show any, am I looking at the right thing, does it show any parking space?
It shows all of it.
Yeah, the very, very last.
Very last.
According to the new code to stripe that site there, we would be quite a few spaces under.
Yeah, cause that. Yeah, cuz that, that right turn I mentioned would, would have to.
Oh, to redo the parking lot, you, you would have to remove the both sides, you know where the right turn you mentioned?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's totally out by the new regs.
Right.
So there's no way that that would be approved, you would not have the radius to turn to go up that hill, so you couldn't build the building there. The way it is now, if you had to enforce the new codes on it. So, so to hire a surveyor to come in and shoot what's there, and to make his notes on what should be there, um, the building wouldn't conform. As probably ninety percent of the buildings that you have functioning in the town now. We, we, you know, you change your codes as you move forward and we try to better our codes and, uh, make it safer for the public and.
Where have we used, uh, this section of the regulations before, Jack?
The last that I remember was, was for Firelight, was the, keep in mind, I, I, I'm a little under five years. Firelight, I know we approved a parking reduction un- under a special permit. That is the only one.
There was a separate office building. Oh, you're talking about thirty five?
Yeah, the Firelight complex, yeah, yeah, that, and then actually, you know, there was one other one when we approved.
And the bank, the bank closes.
Yeah, we approved, I think it was, um, the old chef's, chef's emporium. There was a application that came in for a, a daycare, and they were proposing retail in the front, and we approved that because they were staggered hours.
Right.
Those are my, my only two recollections.
I, I guess the difference I, I see between that application and this is the intensity of the use, in terms of there being a lot more cars.
I'm, I'm still just trying to understand, I'm sorry, Stan?
Stanley, yeah.
Um, so, is it that the existing, let's assume that the plan from ninety eight, which was updated whenever, um, that everything that's there is still there, okay? Are you, are you saying that if we measured these angled spaces, the, the existing ones might only be nine feet wide and if we were building them today, an angled space would have to be ten?
Okay, so, so, to start, to start in the beginning.
Okay.
If, if I was gonna build that building today.
You'd put in a retaining wall and build one story and make a lot of money.
However, however, um, uh, the, the issue is, is that when you pull off of the street, you come off of the post road, that pitch is too severe. DOT is not going to allow that.
That is correct.
Now, your radius is on your, we haven't left the road yet, we haven't left Route one, so, that, that radius would have to be changed. It would also have to be widened by eight feet. So now, when you go to make the turn, before you get to your turn, you were, you were talking about to go up the hill, you can't get to that turn, because that parking lot needs to come forward into the, either touching or maybe into the DOT right away. Because there's not enough room there in the distance across the parking lot. Not only has the width of the parking spaces increased, the depth of the parking spaces have increased over the past ten years. So we need deeper, deeper spots. They're not.
Okay.
They're seventeen.
Alright, so.
But they have curbs on each, each end.
Okay, so you have a bumper overhead.
Correct, so now going up the hills and coming down the hill on the left hand side, the angle, the grade, the percentage of grade exceeds what we're allowed to use today.
Alright, and, and let us assume, just for argument here, that we accept that those elements are pre-existing, and we're not really interested in. What we seem to be focused in on is how many legitimate parking spaces in terms of could, would there be, are there on this lot and, you know, if they were done, so that they could be used a little more, how many would there be?
And, and that is important to you, why?
Well.
I mean, cuz I, it sounds like, I mean, the way I'm thinking about it, I, I sort of view it, maybe it's not technically an enlargement of a non-conforming use, but I view it that way.
It's an intensity question.
Yeah, I see, I see a more intensive use of the property.
Can you define intensity for me, I'm having a hard time with that.
Well, it, it's, it's, I, I think the building was originally, I'm guessing was built to be office space or retail.
Up, up at space, probably office on a grade level retail office.
And everything was fine with the way it was laid out at that time, and now you were putting, we're putting in a use, it's gonna be, it's gonna require a lot more parking, a lot more, there'll be a lot more people on the site.
Exactly, and that's why we're asking you to avail to your code, uh, uh, the ability that we have to avail that section of the code.
But how do I?
For staggered parking.
How do I, how do I, uh, address my health, safety, welfare concerns?
So, so it is, so what he, I think he's, I think what you're trying to articulate is, and using the word intensity, is that if the upper level was office space, people learn the idiosyncrasies of where they go to work, and they learn how to park there, where to park, when to get there, all of those things, cuz it's a repetitive thing. When you introduce a, a convenience type use like a restaurant, you know, people don't go there as often, so you don't want them to have to make a lot of decisions. So you want easy, wide parking spaces to get in and out, you want it to flow easily. We're not, you know, we can't fix the grade, that happened, okay? But, but if the spaces are you know, kinda scrunched in, doesn't do anyone any good if they come out after a nice dinner.
And get wet.
And, and they're slamming their door against their neighbor.
Oh, you, you, you misunderstand, I, I didn't, I didn't, maybe I didn't say it correctly. The spaces are exactly the same as they're required now. Um, as, as Jack pointed out, we, the new spaces are not a four or a six inch stripe, they need to be double striped.
Yeah.
Right, so you're increasing the distance between the, the, the vehicles, but you're still, the spaces themselves are still the same size.
Okay, so.
So we'd be losing one foot per space, per foot. So if you, if you add those spaces up, we're going to lose, in, in a hundred feet, we're gonna lose four spaces.
Uh, well.
And, and the other spaces on the corner.
In a hundred feet, you're gonna have nine instead of ten.
The spaces on the corners, that, that, if you look in the rear corner, there are skewed spaces.
Yeah.
So, there, there's just too many, there's too, so many. If you, if you go across the back of the building and you look at the, the end of the skewed spaces, you'll see a distance between those, between the far back and the back section that hits the building. Right, right there?
Yep.
Okay, so that's gotta be five feet wider to make, to make the code. It's one way.
One way is?
It's one way, so it's gotta be five feet, we, we measured the whole, the whole.
I, I paced that today, it's about fifteen, that length is about fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet?
Right.
And it's supposed to be eighteen, right? I believe so, is it eighteen?
It's eighteen feet, but I have to increase the length of my, my, my stripes, right? So I need to add those extra two feet, so I'm still losing.
Okay, so they're, it's wide enough, but it's not deep enough.
Right, so.
Unless you do the bumper overhead.
Right, in which it, it, it does it on all of them.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna beat, I don't wanna beat the hell out of all the, the current code requirements.
Yeah.
The thing that bothered me the most was if every space had a car in it, even a passenger vehicle can't navigate that, that easily, it's that tight.
Well, let me, you, you remember when we did, we had something involving Munson's, that building behind, and you commented, it was a walkway, pedestrian walkway that you thought needed to be properly signed.
Right.
Or moved, I don't remember exactly what the resolution was.
That's what it was, yeah.
But it was a safety issue, that's all it was, right? And, and, and so, my question is, well, all I'm trying to get at here, I'm not trying to recreate the whole building.
Right.
Parking lot and everything else, I'm just wondering, when do we get to look at these health, safety, welfare issues? I mean, again, without a plan to, to look at, I mean, how do we notice something like what we saw at that Munson property and correct it? I mean, it was.
Well, but it, it's not correctable, it's, you know.
I'm not talking about that thing specifically.
Oh, this, well, this one.
It would depend on the application, or, or in the work being proposed. You know, if someone is not proposing any site changes, like we are, and again, it is, the commission can request an updated site plan, but it is common that when an application comes in and there's no physical alteration, there's really not a site, in many cases, a site plan that wouldn't, you know, really wouldn't be pertinent. It, it might be different for this case, we might say, you know, we want a site plan, but it, it depends on, on what the, a potential applicant is doing that would determine his permitting process. If somebody's just doing internal work, they don't, they don't have to come to us if there's no use issue. They're permitted as of right and they're just redoing the entire, you know, inside of the store, there's nothing with, with us that they'd have to do, even if their parking lot was deficient.
Well, we are, we are certainly gonna create a situation where there's a lot more traffic on that lot, right, I mean, is that true?
Just for example, to Ozzy's point about safety, those first couple of spaces on the inside of that L, you could pretty easily back right into that lane.
Yeah, that's pretty much true of every one-way traffic flow.
Well, no, because you've got this L-shaped configuration, those first couple of spaces.
Oh, it's a block, you're gonna be blind fully, is what you're saying, yes.
That's where it is now.
But that's really not what we're asking for, i- if you're, if you're asking me to get a, redo the site, then nothing's gonna fit there.
What we're tasked with is to make sure that our decisions don't make something more dangerous. You know, it's, it's clearly that, it's not that we want someone to rebuild something that's perfectly serviceable. But it's perfectly serviceable when somebody works their way into this parking lot and stays for eight hours. If you're trying to turn over a table every forty-five minutes, and, you know, there's that additional amount of people moving in tight spaces at night, you know, you know, are we feeling confident that they can navigate that safely is really what I think is generating the concerns. It's not trying to make someone go through an exercise to spend money, you know, for no purpose.
Wouldn't you view this as a, a, a good, an opportune time to take a look at the site lighting? I mean, again, there's, there's a lot more activity there, I, I don't know that that.
Yeah, but, but something this small that could handle from the building, most likely.
Right, I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying, i- if it's not on a plan, there's no way for us to enforce it, I mean, to require it.
Yeah, but if, if it's not inviting to, they're not gonna be successful anyway.
I, I know, but I don't wanna rely on that.
No, I, you know.
You know what I mean?
I've never had a building, uh, uh, photogrammatic, uh, study asked for by zoning.
Yeah.
We usually, the building department, ninety percent of the time, does ask us for photogrammatics of, of the site. And where, where the lights are, and is there any, now, there's even the light pollution law.
Yeah.
So, because of dark skies.
We do require lighting.
If it was a site.
We're looking at it. We're looking.
Photometric plan, we do require, yeah.
But, uh, five, twenty-five foot candles at the, at the boundary.
Something, something at least orange is always required in our site plans.
Yeah, but, um. What, what's, what's your timeframe on this, what, what are your, is this something that's urgent in some way, or?
It's only urgent because we have a deposit on the property.
Yeah.
And we're trying to
Meet the costs.
Meet the deadline before it'll fall off, which is, uh, three days ago.
Three days ago.
Well, no, this, the meet, your outcome will determine whether it moves forward or not.
Oh.
Because they're not gonna pay to keep it open, there's a, a clause where you can pay X amount of dollars a month and extend it.
Okay, uh, do you have anything else to add, or?
Nope, uh, the only thing that the client had said to us is they have no, uh, problem if the, uh, commission found their way to approve it and put a stipulation on there for five o'clock uh, to closing on weekdays, and no stipulation on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Stanley.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Fix whatever, wherever we can, we can fix.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, it's just that, by, by trying to make the parking lot code compliant today, we'll lose spaces.
You're, you're so, I think you're taking it just a step farther than we are in terms of compliance.
Yeah, I'm not looking. We're not looking to do anything with the parking lot in terms of.
What, what we're trying to do, and maybe it ends in the same place, is make sure that it's safe to use in the, if we put a restaurant up there.
Gotcha.
Okay.
That's what I was, I mean, I wasn't asking, I wasn't asking that you.
We're not looking to regrade, we're not looking to, but if, in our heart of hearts, we, 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 we think we're gonna be creating, you know, a big traffic problem up there, where people are gonna be, you know, uh, you know, causing damage or, you know, harm to themselves, you know, because they don't know the parking lot, they don't know it's one-way, they're not used to doing things.
The only thing I can say is it's been functioning for years.
But it was never a restaurant.
That's, that's.
But cars are cars, you could, you backside on a truck.
No, but.
It's the intensity that we're looking at, obviously.
I mean, supposing, suppo- supposing the, if the fire marshal looked at it and he said, you know what, I wasn't too worried about this, the fact that I had a difficult time maneuvering my trucks around the lot, because it's an office use, it's a retail use. I'm not likely gonna be fighting a fire there, but a restaurant, maybe he's a little more concerned about that.
Do you have a threshold where the fire department would have to come back out and re-approve those?
To be what?
Do you have a threshold where something would kick in?
I, so I, I did mention this to the fire marshal, just so he could, and I know that he actually did send, uh, one of their apparatuses out to navigate it now.
Mm-hmm.
And his conclusion was a little like Tom said, where, where there's not a lot of parking, or cars in the parking lot, it, it could be done. But he said, if it is a packed parking lot, he goes, we would be having a very hard time with where it sits today.
And they'd be fighting a fire with their equipment on, on the post road.
That, that I don't know.
No, like, no one's blocking the roads.
Right, I don't know their procedure, but, you know, I, I said if he really felt strongly about it to put it in a memo for us, he said, you know, it wasn't anything like that, but, you know, he did, you know, express his concern with a full parking lot, how his apparatuses would move.
I think that's a reasonable inquiry, again, on the health, safety, welfare.
Right, I, I did.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the application? Okay, hearing none, so. Uh, we can close the public hearing, we can leave the public hearing open, if we leave the public hearing open, what is the purpose of doing that? I think the only thing that I would want is some input from, um, our local officials, specifically the fire guy, Jamie.
Yeah, I could, I could.
And, and Chief Gagny. I, I think that's reasonable, and I understand it's not a formal site plan.
Yes, but this is just a referral from a town.
Absolutely.
Employee, they absolutely can, and, and I, I made that clear.
Because my first reaction, when I pulled in with my little sports car, was, Jesus, tight, okay? So, I think it's an app, absolutely, I mean, I think Stanley did a, a fine job and I think he's a great advocate. That being said, I think your perceptions and Tommy's, and I guess everybody else's too, is that it's gotta be thought about a, a lot more than we're thinking about it here, I want the, I want some people to look at it too. I mean, it's a useful, go ahead. No, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm done. No, I mean, I think it's a useful goal for us to try to, um, you know, utilize this section of the regulations. A, a hundred percent. Why have the, you know, parking spaces we don't need or are never gonna get used? But you gotta take a look at it as a whole on this particular lot. But, but it does change things on, on the lot.
I, I would like to, you know, take up the discussion again in two weeks. I, I would like to, you know, take up the discussion again in two weeks. Cuz I would like to, you know, spend some time seeing if I have concerns, cuz I, I think the shared parking analysis is valid. Okay, and I think that with respect to parking.
Presuming we can impose those restrictions that we talked about and we can enforce those.
That the use in the remainder space is office, that, that we're basing it that, that this is office space, this is a restaurant, this is retail.
It's gonna require monitoring.
Uh, can you check with Vinnie on whether or not that's enforceable in a special permit application?
The, the time of operation?
And that it runs with the land?
And the time of operation.
I know, it, it does run with the land, that I can tell you with certainty, that all special permits and exemptions run with the land.
Okay.
I just, I do wanna check that, that time.
So we need to be very, if, if we were to approve it, we need to be very careful about what we're approving, you know, what, what restrictions are applicable.
The, but I do think it's a valid concern that just because what's there today works for today's uses, okay, doesn't necessarily mean that it won't function properly for a different use.
And it won't.
It won't, it, it, the, the site fun, ha- has functioned for fifty years or however many years.
Sure, alright.
Uh, as office space and retail. With no private, I'm not familiar with any, you know.
A lot of it hasn't been used.
Accidents and whatever.
We've got two vacancies.
Right, but, and, well, you know, that's.
It wasn't built before zoning was in effect, right?
No, no.
It was built, it was built.
It was approved.
Yeah, it was approved in accordance with the zoning regulations.
Maybe we can find out when it was built.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine is what he said.
Right, but, but when we change the use, now you're bringing the different people in their vehicles onto the site. Who don't, you know, people don't understand one ways that well sometimes.
You know, the, not the use, but the property or the, the lot or whatever is, is non-conforming.
Not right now.
Well, not as to the use, but if, if those, if those parking spaces aren't what they're supposed to, then it's non-conforming.
The, the number of spaces is not, but the, the physical parking lot itself would not meet today's site plan standards.
So, they're legal, non-conforming.
It's legally confor- it's legally pre-existing, non-conforming.
It's non-conforming, that's the, the term in the regulation, it's non-conforming, but they can continue.
Absolutely.
That non-conformity, uh, because it predated the, the, uh, the regulations applicable.
So if you're talking.
But that doesn't mean we can't, you know, we can't impose any conditions on our approval.
But if it's, it is the change of use to something that's legally non-conforming, a, an expansion?
One, one more time.
Okay, so.
Well, that's what I was starting, I, I, I was, that's what I was getting at, I mean, it's not.
I don't think you can change one non-conforming use with another.
Let me ask you this, is restaurant use a permitted use in the C-two zone?
I, I know it is, but we'll, we'll just make extra.
So the, there's, the use is not.
Correct, yes.
The use is not non-conforming.
It is a conforming use and is permitted as of right.
And then there's, you know, then, then there are setback requirements, there are high, you know.
Bulk requirements.
Yeah, all the bulk requirements, the, the requirements applicable to the parking spaces, all that. And again, those could be legally non-conforming, you know, at the time that parking plan, you know, the layout went into effect, it complied with the zoning regulations.
Listen, I, I think that Stan brought out, I mean, the application is one for the special permit, that it wants to acknowledge the, the shared usage of the parking lot. I think that's only one of the inquiries here because the, the health and safety is one that we, we keep banging into. That even if they, even if we're willing to acknowledge, as Kevin said, the fact that there's, um, you know, uh, other spaces there that they can use because it's, it's office, that doesn't preclude the fact that we're increasing the intensity in the back in a very tight area.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, uh, it, it, this is a, the, the regulation captures a, a, a good idea. But we all know there are places in Orange where you take your life in your hand going into the parking lot.
You, you go first.
Right, I mean, you know, and, you know, Maury Milford of, you know, Costco or something, I mean, you know.
Deep like Costco alone. Hey, so, oh, do we have the ability?
But that doesn't mean we can't, you know, can't take a look at that and.
Right, so if we close the public hearing, that doesn't preclude the fact from us going to the.
No, if we close the public hearing, well, I think we could take input from town employees.
Even if it's closed.
Even if it's closed, but I would say why not just keep it open?
As long as you're not bumping up against a tiny, uh.
E- e- exactly, there's no reason for us not to keep it open right now, so if we do want input.
What if they have some rebuttal, additional information?
Exactly, so why not, if we do want input from the fire marshal, chief of police, we can keep this open and then.
Let's get that, let's get that information from them for starters. And, uh, um, yeah, we'll, we'll keep the public hearing open because, you know, we'll, uh, see what else comes up. And there's no reason not to, as long as we're not, as I said, bumping up against.
Yeah, no, this is, we just opened it tonight, so we're, we've got thirty-five days.
Alright, so that's, the public hearing's still open, we'll continue with it, our next meeting on the, uh, sixteen.
Sixteenth, yes, sir.
Sixteenth April, okay, very good.
Oh, yeah, taxes than us, what a great, what a great week for the applicant.
Alright, that, uh, that finishes off our agenda for this evening.
So, we're gonna see you in two weeks, sir.
Alright, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
And seconded, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, very good, eight thirty-seven.